All right. I have six P M. We're gonna go ahead and call meeting order. Roll call.
Sorry.
Mike Madley.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Gary Rowe.
Here.
Director Stoner Harris.
Here.
Here.
Twelve Williams.
Here.
Megan Wilson.
Here.
All right, uh, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Honoration, honor, and respect as well for liberty and justice.
All right, uh, we need a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes, but they're gonna make some changes.
Uh, I move that we approve the executive session minutes from February twenty-third and March seventh uh, to remain confidential. And that is it.
You said March seventh?
Just the February twenty-third and March seventh. Uh, meetings. So we are removing the March twenty-first executive session minute, executive session meeting minutes, and removing the March twenty-eighth minutes.
My second.
Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded, uh, roll call.
Gary Rowe.
Yes.
Mike Madley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Director Stoner Harris.
Yes.
Yes.
Megan Wilson, yes, twelve years.
Yes. Uh, approval and deletions from the agenda. Um, we have a flurry of names to add. Um, so Dr. wants if we can just go through them.
Sure.
We'll annotate those and then we'll
Sure.
approve for those as modified.
And again, these are just some uh additions of names in different places. Uh, in the apologize. So if we go to section um, section seven, letter I, we need to add Paula Ziegler. She's um, she's a third year probationary status, so we need to add her name to that list. Seven I, seven I H. That should be
Seven, right up, keep going.
Is it page eight?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, page eight, I'm sorry.
Page eight.
Uh-huh. So we're gonna add Paula Ziegler to um, letter I. Okay, and if we go to um, section uh, seven uh, uh, who's that letter? It looks like uh, J. I do know my alphabet, so I, J, K. All right, and J, we're going to add um, Sally. I'm knowing probably not pronouncing it right. Sally Heine, H E I N E. Two-year probationary status. So we're gonna add her to J.
Okay.
Uh, and then in uh, letter K, in that same section, if wish to add Susan Lonnie, L O N N I N G, to one-year probationary status.
Okay.
Um, and then in, in section six B, section six B, under Lake Illinois, that action item. There's just a change. Instead of having Ridgewood Elementary there, that should be Thomas Jefferson, instead of Ridgewood. Six B, so.
And there is
And there was one last one in section D, correct?
It would be under sections seven D.
Okay.
And um, the actual year ending would be twenty-two, twenty-three, not twenty-two, twenty-four.
Okay. That's on page five.
Correct.
Section D.
Yep.
And that should be twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
Correct.
Instead of twenty-two to twenty-four. Page two, page five? Definitely under section D. Oh, gotcha.
Yep.
This be twenty-two to twenty-three. Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Gotcha.
All right, and that should be it.
All right, so um, can we get a motion to approve the modified agenda?
So move.
While second. Uh, properly moving, seconded, uh, roll call.
Megan Wilson, yes, Mike Madley.
Yes.
Director Stoner Harris.
Yes. Yes.
Gary Rowe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Rowing.
Uh, yes, motion carries. Uh, board member reports. I will start on the interwebs. As Mr. Madley likes to say it, Dr. Stoner Harris.
I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Rowe.
Just a quick one, uh, update on Head Start Policy Council. We have uh, two hundred ninety-six children enrolled out of a total of three hundred. We have uh, uh, a hundred and twenty-seven age eligible, age eligible returners, and fifty-five children on the waitlist. We expect those to be uh, filled up. Uh, sixty-three children with individual education plans, IEPs, twenty-seven require an interpreter, and eight case study evaluations pending. And then Nicole will have more of a report later on, and that's for her to do. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Pugh.
Uh, I guess mine's gonna be by Head Start too. So I said I was gonna go around to all the schools visiting the um, special ed department, so I went and visited a Horace Mann Early Learning Center, and I was, man, very impressed. Very impressed, Ms. Barrett, with what I saw. I liked the attention that they gave the Head Start program. You know, they split the kids up into the programs that they really needed with learning. You know, with their disabilities, with kids who need um, work on their speech and things like that. For the kids who needed more attention on certain areas, I love that they did. And I love they got the kids who stay in there for the half of day and the ones who stay for the full day for what their needs. And I loved uh, the fire that all the teachers had and their parents had, but it they still need some things at that school that I see that the other programs need. I think we might need to look into uh, having more parents, even parents on call for the ones in they they short that day. Um, I really uh, walked around the school and I was wondering if maybe we should start putting all our focuses to making Horace Mann our main Head Start building. And um, putting all our resources into this, just that building. And maybe looking to expand it and make it bigger and moving all our Head Start programs out of our other buildings where we can focus more on what they need and um, and put more money into that program and uh, make it better, spreading it all out. That mean our resources are going out in the different areas and we can put it all into one. And uh, we have the space there. They had, they have a lot of space. They redid the playground, which I like, more safer for the kids and stuff like that. But um, I was wondering if we could probably take a look into that. And um, probably putting all our resources just in that area for our Head Start program. And things, so that's it. I got some more schools I'd be visiting uh, next week, so let's see how it goes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Madley.
Uh, we had the school board election last week, and uh, we will have two new members joining us uh, as Dr. Stoner Harris and Ms. Megan Wilson uh, leave. Uh, so Mr. Jason Rossler uh, will be joining us, and then uh, Ms. Nicole Sisney Durbin uh, will also be joining us. So I think we have to wait till the ballots are officially canvassed. Hopefully that's gonna be done and timed for uh, but we'll, we'll wait to see from uh, from the county when that process is actually done so that we can formally seat them and uh, welcome, welcome them as a part of our team. So congratulations uh, to the two of those individual members um, on their election. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wilson.
Uh, I just wanted to congratulate the two new school board members. Um, and then I have two events coming up. I'm gonna be attending the Impact Agreement night, tomorrow night, and then the um, educator of the year event on Friday, so I'm looking forward to those. And other than that, that's it.
All right, um, I'll do my typical, there's a lot going on in the district. Um, if you're out there and you're wanting some more representation at your event, please reach out to us directly. That's the best way to kind of get us there. Um, uh, given that our, we have our busy schedules. Um, and outside of that, um, there's a, there's a million athletic events going on right now in the spring. Please try to get out and support. Um, I always give a plug for the less less uh, I would say popular sports to get out and uh, attend those sporting events. Um, um, I have an obligation to attend soccer now that my wife is a coach, but uh, the it's never a good thing when the visiting team has more fans than you. So please get out, support uh, all the events in the district. Uh, we have a calendar out there that has all these things on there. Um, and if you're wondering why people are always so busy and hard to get a hold of, just look at that calendar, because there is something going on pretty much every night of the week um, and the weekend. So that is my plug to get out and get into the district, and that is all I have for this evening. Dr. Lawrence.
Um, well, I have a couple of things tonight. Normally I try to keep it short and sweet, but um, I first ask that um, we give a moment of silence to recognize the death of um, Faith Zulu. She's a current twelfth grader at Thurgood Marshall Learning Center. She lost her life this week, to gun violence. Um, again, I'm gonna give my condolences to Faith, her family, our school community, Thurgood Marshall Learning uh, Center community, because I know that this is a difficult time for all of them. So please ask that you bow your heads and give us a, a moment of silence. Thank you. Today was pretty tough. No, um, it's not many mornings that I, I wake up thinking about what I'm gonna say during my superintendent's report. Because it's always scouring a number of the activities and things that um, you know, that we do um, athletically and in classrooms and stuff, but but today was a little tough. You hear about the loss of students. Um, you think about all the things they could have become. Um, you think about what they're going through, and we don't always know that. And so my, my report today is a little bit different because um, when you talk to superintendents, a superintendent's report, it is supposed to be about updating the community on the positive things that are going on in your district. That's what it's supposed to be. Uh, we know that negative things go on in every district in all of our lives. So if I were giving my positive notes like I normally do, I'd be talking about first, I want to send a shout out to WNBA Minnesota teammate now, um, Bree Beal. You know, um, that's, I mean, that's amazing. The thing, coming from Little Rock Island, Little Rock Island District, you know, we had Miss Illinois for several years. You win and win a championship at South Carolina, and now you get drafted in the second round of the WNBA. I'd be sharing that piece. I then be talking about last week, I had a chance to go on Paula Sands Live, and there were a number of topics that we talked about. We, you know, we mentioned the fourth annual educator of the year gala that's coming up this Friday to celebrate our teachers, because we have some amazing people doing amazing things. But I was more excited to talk about the social emotional learning work that we're doing. We received an education innovation research grant from the Department of Education for three point eight million dollars over the next four years that no other district in the Quad City or some in the nation haven't received to try and further our work on social emotional meeting of social emotional learning and needs of students at the high school level. Where they don't sing kindergarten songs and dance and that whole bit. We're talking about high school kids. But it's just an effort that we're trying to put there, so that's a positive. I talk about in learning maybe a month ago in the whole social emotional learning work. We have a contract with um, with the Figgy Museum and Western Illinois University. Shout out to Dr. Beck. We've got the counseling department who has counseling interns at the high school. They have caseloads. They're doing intake meetings. They're trying to, again, do our part in dealing with all these social emotional and mental health needs that are not new. They've been there for years. They've just been exacerbated by COVID, so we're trying to do our part there. I'd mention and talk about all the programs going on in our buildings, whether it's through the family engagement coordinators, the, the, the events and programs that should be putting on, whether they're athletic or, or, or academic. You're doing that to bring joy back into the schools, into our families, into our district, and guess what? That's addressing social emotional learning needs. And then lastly, I talk about, and I, you know, I, I know that G I T Improv, they changed their name because it used to be um, Guys in Ties, but you know, you're trying to be politically correct, so it's just G I T Improv, but quick fifteen-minute piece with our teachers when they returned back from, from the break to say that lighthearted humor is needed. We all need to find time to laugh, because if you're not laughing, you can find a million things to cry about. It's a small, small take on trying to address that piece. And so I would have shared all those things to say that even with hearing the news about our student, you know, and, and all the things that they go through at home, in the community, with families, in school and everywhere. Schools do a lot. Teachers, uh, uh, administrators, support staff, custodians, principals, cabinets, superintendents. Schools do a lot. And they take on every task that's brought to them. Feeding students, social services, nurses, anything that's brought, everybody says, get it into the schools, because we know that that's a place where we have kids for a bulk of time every day. But guess what, folks? We can't do everything in schools. So when I was thinking about what I was gonna say is, yes, we're proud of all those great things that we're doing. And even with doing all of that, it's never gonna be enough. Because things like a student losing their life happens. But we have to remember that we can't do it by ourselves. It's gonna always be a plea to community members, to families and parents, to organizations that provide services. None of us can do it by ourselves. And so I would hope that we always continue to try and take those moments to put joy back into schools, put joy in people's lives, because you never know the impact that you're having on them or if they'll be back tomorrow. And uh, that's tough for that family. But it's tough for his educators too, because we build relationships, so um, that's my superintendent's report, is that there's gonna always be positives going on in schools where everyone's trying to do everything they can. But just remember that we're not gonna be able to do enough for everyone. And I hope that it's okay, because we tried to put forth that after doing what we could. That's my report today.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. Uh, R I E A President, Mr. Andrew Haynes.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence.
Thank you. Um, we have two cars from Folks willing or wanting to speak to the Board of Education this evening. I'll do my normal statement and then oh, there's two more. Okay, all right. Um, all right, so I'll do my general statement, and then if we need to adjourn to hear any of these, uh, because one of them doesn't have a topic and the other, I'm, I'm not sure about, we'll uh, we'll adjourn to executive session. Um, welcome your comments and questions and give them serious consideration in compliance with board policy two, colon, two thirty, public participation at Board of Education minute uh, meetings and petitions to the board. We ask that you state your name and address for the record. We ask as well, uh, the agenda, uh, the agenda item to which your comment is directed, if applicable. Uh, we ask that you limit the length of your comments uh, to no longer than three minutes. If you wish to speak about an individual's uh, being a student, faculty, or staff member, you may do so, but we will adjourn to executive session to hear your comments. And finally, we ask that all speakers conduct themselves with respect and civility and otherwise abide by board policy eight, colon, thirty, visitors to and conduct on school property. And with that, Mr. Bayes.
Randy Bayes, twenty-eight oh five Seventeen Street, Rock Island. I just wanna start tonight, because Dave Rockwell went to his grave, and this was one of his key items that he wanted to get the school addressed. And so I'm gonna throw some rhetorical questions out to you guys today for your consideration. These aren't direct, but consider them. Some of you guys specifically. Why am I still coming to these meetings? There's no, there are certain members of this board who have personal agendas, which doesn't include the swimming pool. These agenda, agendas don't represent the will of the people of Rock Island. These agendas do not represent the leadership of Rock Island. This agenda goes against the recommendations a committee you at the school board commissioned fifteen years ago. This is agenda of theirs, goes against the voters of Rock Island, who approved the increase of our sales tax. I find it hard to believe that there's members of the school board that don't understand, if you don't maintain something, it's eventually gonna break. You figured it out at the last meeting when we had an issue with the girls' gym. Get that fixed, toot sweet. Get that done before school starts. It's really frustrating for me, and I, and I'm, I'm upset about this. I'm, I'm really tired of this. I find it hard to believe that they can approve those repairs just like that. Whether it's a parking lot or a swimming pool, if you don't maintain it, it's gonna fail. And I know there were some members that were real clear on that at the last meeting. But yeah, if you don't maintain a parking lot, it'll fail. If you don't maintain a pool for forty years, it's gonna fail. I find it really hard to believe that we pay a pool operator four hours a day, every day of the week. I'm at the pool all the time. You know what that person is? That's a janitor. That's not a pool operator, so you're getting ripped off. Because when it comes to a time for a meet, I'm the one cleaning the gallery. I'm the one wiping things down. Not the pool operator. That's a joke. So why do I sweep the pool up? Why? Why would I care? Because I care about Rock Island. I care about swimming. I care about these kids, and I care about this program. And I find it hard to believe the school board doesn't understand the difference between a cost and the price of something. Because there's a value included. And that all you, all some people see is a price tag, and that's a shame. This body would have moved appropriately when the recommendations for repairs and, and updates were made. We wouldn't be in this situation. It's my contention that the Rock Island School Board members who have continuously voted no for the pool and related issues do not represent the voters, the constituents, the city, the community, and mostly the best entrance of the school and students of the Rock Island School District. It's also my contention that the Rock Island School Board members who put the school, the pool in this place, that placed their personal agenda against those things that have cost the taxpayers an exorbitant amount of money, about four million dollars. So start writing the checks. Alls I can say is, folks here, if you think they should fix a pool, raise your hand. Do you think they should just leave it sit? Don't. Because this is ridiculous. I don't know why I'm, I'm doing it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms., Ms. Edwards.
My name is Tia Farah Edwards. Address is five zero five Sixth Street, Rock Island, Illinois. First of all, I just want to say thank you for um, allowing me to speak today. You guys hit a couple of areas. Uh, Mr. Pugh, we expect to see you at Thurgood Marshall Learning Center to come see our program, so please make sure you reach out and schedule a time, or I can do that as well. Um, in addition to our new board members, our uh, doors will always be open, so just call ahead to make sure someone's there, which they always are. But the door is always open for any board member who has not had the opportunity to visit this year. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. You've been there to visit us this year, so if you haven't had a chance, we'll still be there through June second, I believe. So just thank you so much for that. And then a shameless plug, Tuesday, May second, Thurgood Marshall will be hosting a community college and career day. We will have employers on site, bring resumes. If you need assistance, write in a resume or create one. Our staff is set up and ready to help any community person that would need help, uh, students as well as their families, so please come out Tuesday, May second. We'll send a formal invite. Uh, tonight I am reaching out to you on behalf of our, our MS, R I M S D forty-one student Faith Zulu. She is not only uh, a member of this community, but she is at Thurgood Marshall Learning Center Titan. And if anybody knows anything about a Titan, a Titan is strong. It's a uh, it's a mix of when the, the heavens and the earths meet. And so I want to say thank you to her father. Uh, many of you guys may not have been aware, uh, they suffered a loss last year of their mother. And losing Faith this year is undoubtedly another tough um, pill for them to swallow. But I want to celebrate, because oftentimes we think of single parents and what the struggle is, but Faith's dad worked tirelessly with us to ensure that Faith was able to be at school and to do her best. Oftentimes, we look at this as a us versus we. School board, you are weak. We are a community together. So when we look at these situations, Dr. Lawrence pointed out that sometimes there are just, these are the casualties of our positions here in life. However, we hope that Faith's life has not been lived in vain, because we at Thurgood Marshall know that we are a trauma-informed school who takes a complete look at each student and makes sure that we individually create a plan to help them be successful. So I heard about a lot of things that are gonna be happening in the community. The one thing I ask is, please don't forget Thurgood Marshall. Oftentimes, decisions are made for our building without people ever setting foot inside to see what it is that we actually do. They don't know our students. They make assumptions. They talk about the bad school. But we have students who suffer from anxiety, who can't be in big spaces, who have issues at home. But we also have a very strong supportive family and community. And so today I am asking that we honor Faith on uh, June third at the Vibrant Center with a uh, high school diploma, diploma posthumously to not just say that her life was in vain, that she was in fact a District forty-one student and a Thurgood Marshall who deserves a Rock Island High School diploma. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Uh, Ms. Ballard.
You all know who I am. I'm Bonnie Ballard. Six fourteen hundred and seventy-six Avenue, West Mylan, Illinois. First of all, I hadn't planned to speak tonight. But I do want to say that Rock Island District forty-one, Rock Island Mylan District forty-one, used to be the premier school in this area. Everybody looked up to this district. With everything. So let's get back where we used to be. Let's get everything fixed. You know, this, 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 this is a pre, this is premier. Okay, I hadn't planned to say that, so, okay. But what I really wanted to say is like an announcement, you know, the COVID stuff is still going on. And um, I just want to announce that um, the N A C P has partnered with the Q C Air, Unit Point uh, Health, Community Healthcare, Ex, uh, Illinois Extension, University of Illinois, Uvana, um, project now. We are having a screening um, uh, a screening, a health screen, a free health screening on April twenty-second. And it's gonna be from ten A M to one P M. And we would just like for everybody, kids to really attend this, so that they can get screened for whatever the needs are. And I have, I have flyers, if you would like to take them.
Yes, please.
And especially in the underserved uh, schools. You know, we would like for everybody to come out. This is free. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And also I'd like to say that uh, the candidate for turned out to be really great. So we're proud of uh, the R I A president and the teachers of Rock Island, Mylan District. And board, not gonna fuck you tonight.
Uh, student, what's, what's going on? Uh, Mr. Robinson, it says item number five. Are you, is it a different item of five, or are you talking employee?
Actually, four.
Or?
It's a blanket motion.
Okay.
Tonight.
Got it. Okay.
So Moses Robinson, nine twenty-four Sixth Street, Rock Island. Um, I come to you tonight, and again, just thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you. Um, I come um, speaking about Franklin Field, so I understand you're gonna be uh, renewing a community garden um, agreement at that location. A couple of things we're, we're, we're seeing at that location. Uh, with me being on city council, a lot of residents in the area thinks it's a city lot uh, due to the neglect from the field. Um, community garden hasn't been there in a couple of years, and the grass has not been maintained, so it's almost like wildfire there right now. It's a breeding ground for animals, uh, snakes, rats. So it's almost like wildfire there right now. It's a breeding ground for animals, uh, snakes, rats, uh, raccoons. Whatever. Um, the residents in that area are really concerned about the, just the the state of that area. Walking along the sidewalk, you can barely get through the sidewalk because of overgrown grass. Uh, so I'm just requesting that, you know. In the midst of you approving this or maybe approving this, uh, because I think it's a blanket motion. So I think you already made your decision on that. Um, we have a community gardens also within the city. Uh, what we have to do is kind of make sure we have policies in place. That it's taken care of before, during, and after the growing season. Um, typically there's a lot of trash that's left in that area. And I know the mowers who come through, it's just like a big gang mower that they use. Um, it's typically not messed with. Um, right now, I think you can go down there. You can probably see the grass probably like three to four feet high. And in the summertime, it's even higher. So it's a, it's a nice breeding ground for animals. Uh, the residents in that area, like I mentioned before, they're complaining about the snakes and the rodents coming into their their residence. Um, and while I'm speaking on Franklin, I know this is not on your agenda, but you also have another one at Thurgood Marshall. Uh, Thurgood Marshall has another community garden. Um, I don't know who's doing it at this moment, but again, it's not being taken care of. Um, it's overgrown. Um, you have a brand new playground there that's beautiful for the community. But I think kids are probably going to be terrified to to play there because you don't know what's going to slither into the playground area or what's coming up out of there. Um, with the, you know, the risk of different rabies and everything that animals carry. Uh, I just ask that you take that in consideration when you're planning that, you know, passing this motion. Um, whoever's going to be actually manning this garden, that they make sure that it's maintained throughout the season and also after the season. Um, if not, if we can have your, your uh, lawn, I mean, your um, your, your team actually just mow that down. Uh, and in in the junction with everything else around. And I I'm willing to assist the sidewalks to clear it off. Uh, because most people can't pass through the sidewalks because of the overgrown grass. Like I said, it's it's a big mower that goes through, so they don't really take the time to edge or anything like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak this evening that did not submit a card? Um, if not, uh, team, if you'll entertain, we have a person. Uh, in. The audience that we're going to approve this evening, we want to move that up to now, if possible. So we can let people get on, get on their way. If they would like.
Yes. I would like to move that we. Take action on item seven, a personnel communications director. Uh, recommending the approval of Elizabeth Beth Marsum. No? Yes, okay. Uh, for the position of communications director to start as soon as possible, salary of eighty thousand dollars.
Alright, uh, properly moving seconded. Is there a comment on this one?
Yeah, I'd just like to say how supportive I am of this. I've worked with Ms. Marsun and other uh, settings. Uh, she has a high degree of professionalism, uh, great experience that's pertinent and uh. I suppose just a personal thing, her dad was my best buddy in high school. So, we go back a long way. I knew her before she could walk.
Thank you, Ms. Row. Uh, I'm assuming, does it say as soon as possible? Okay, awesome. Alright, so, alright. Uh, my only question, is this eighty K going to be prorated for this year? Yes. Alright. Um, any other comments, questions? Nope. Okay, uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries.
But our poll policy, get a chance to come up. They're gonna, they're gonna make us look better. They're gonna put like a beast behind us.
Hi, everybody. Um, so I was telling Jenna as I walked in, my dad taught in this building for thirty years. And so I actually haven't been in here with the. New addition yet. And so I was like, I don't know where I am. So, um, I couldn't be more thrilled to be working in Rock Island. I grew up here. I've lived here almost my entire life and um, my background is news and school communications. So um, I'm just really excited to. You know. I would say become a rock, but I've always been one. So um, thank you guys very much. I will enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Alright, dropping back down to uh, routine matters. Uh, request for future agenda items. Uh, we receive a request every week, a previously requested future agenda items. Is there? Any requests for items that are not currently on that list? Thanks, Donna Harris.
I don't have any requests for new items, but if we could have some follow-up on some of those items that are on the list, that would be great.
Awesome. Request, request. Alright, uh, moving on to blanket motion. Uh, does anybody want to remove anything from the blanket motion?
I don't want to remove anything, but can we have a comment on the Franklin Field Garden project, like what the plan is to ensure that it's being taken care of properly?
Yep. We can. Um. So enter a motion to approve. Blanket, so moves.
Oh, second.
Uh, properly moving seconded. Floor is open.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know who would have some information, but I just, I think that was a good point to make sure that it's being taken properly. So. There's anything to add on that?
Yeah, we've, I I'm sure that Jen is taking those notes down and, you know, it's, it's um. I won't make any excuses. Again, this has been shared with us and we have to do our part in ensuring that. Um, when if we partner with individuals, whether it's to do a garden or anything on our properties, we do want to make sure that it's properly maintained. And um, well, now is the season for grass. So uh, we need to make sure that it's on all of our properties and that's something that we'll jump on. Um, as soon as we're, as soon as we're able to. So thank you for sharing that, um, all the minutes.
Hey, uh, Moses, also if you need some help down there, man, just let me know. Like, you know, second Saturday each month, we'll be doing various areas of first course, so definitely. Hit me up and I, I bring a team down there.
Any other comments on anything on the blanket?
Uh, just a general comment that I'll be abstaining from this vote. I have a family member involved in the blanket as a resignation. Uh, and I try to avoid voting on uh, any item that involves family. So. I don't not support anything on the agenda.
Thank you for clarification. Uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, moving on to item five, operations. I guess this is short enough. I'll read it. Uh, player request, district received the player request and responded within the five-day limit to miss. Uh, Tayad, Ta- Tania Campbell requesting bid uh, opening tabulation. Or apparent low bidder on the Rock Island. Twenty twenty-three side improvement project bid uh, for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. In addition, uh, uh, Ms. Tania Campbell was uh, was responded to in five-day time limit requesting. Opening bid tabulation or apparent little bitter Rock Island Mylan, I'm sorry, Rock Island High School twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three toilet. Uh, room renovations rebid project that was bid on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. And the bid opening tabulation or apparent little better. On the twenty twenty-three Ridgewood Vertical Platform Lift Replacement Project. Uh, that bid on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Mister Vince X V uh, was responded to in the five-day limit. Requesting a copy of the school district's mission statement, um, and copies of any previous mission statements providing. They have changed them in the recent past. Alright. That's what we got for boys and operations on item six, business finance. Uh, can we get a motion to approve the Head Start program, change in scope, enrollment reduction?
So moved second.
Properly moving seconded. Comments?
I thought I'd give a background. Good evening. Thank you. Um, I know I was here a couple of weeks ago to share information, but I wanted to give a little background on this. Um, before the vote takes place. Um, so the Head Start program, I discussed uh, that last time. That the request for this evening is to reduce forty-four slots. Um, currently, our program is funded for two hundred ninety-nine students. We are asking for a reduction of slots to two fifty-five. Um, Head Start programs throughout the United States, the. Uh, Director of Head Start has given permission for all programs within the country to be able to request a reduction of enrollment. Um, for a variety of reasons. Um, some of it could be due to um, budget where they need to allocate the money in a different area. Um, some of it can be for quality of services. There were a variety of reasons that they gave for why we could do that. The reason why we are choosing to write for the reduction of slots is to improve the quality of services that we can offer to the children and families we serve. The information I want to share is that that does not mean that forty-four less students. Within the Rock Island Mylan School District that qualify for preschool will not receive those services. As I mentioned at the board meeting two weeks ago, we are adjusting our programming next year. So that we are going to have all of our preschool for all sections not be partnered with Head Start. So part of that is right now, I did a little breakdown, so just bear with me. Um, right now, the preschool for all has um, twenty slots that they can service both in a morning and an afternoon section. Currently, we have provided an extended day option. So eighteen of those students. That are in Head Start in the morning go to the afternoon preschool for all program. While those eighteen students would not be Head Start students next year, that would allow twenty students. In that afternoon section to come from preschool for all. In addition, in the morning section, they would also be able to service twenty in the morning. So the preschool for all grant is written for a hundred and twenty students each year and a hundred and twenty students. Um, was dropped down to one sixteen a couple of years ago to be able to work with and partner with Head Start. To accommodate those eighteen students in the morning that would go to P F A in the afternoon. So the um, amount of students that would be able to be served this upcoming year would be that hundred and twenty students for P F A. So we would actually be able, while we're cutting forty-four slots from Head Start, there would be fifty-four slots that would be able. For students to be serviced within preschool for all. So we're not going to not be servicing forty-four students. We're actually going to be servicing ten more students within the early childhood programs. So I just wanted to make sure I gave that as a background. Because it is not, the intention was not to not service students. We obviously have a need of servicing students. So um, it's just a matter of shifting um, where the funding is for that. So um, the improvement and being able to improve that quality of slots is that. As I mentioned last time with the community assessment, we've seen a significant increase in the number of students who have experienced trauma within the preschool level. Obviously, therefore exhibiting social emotional issues and have behavior concerns in the classroom. Right now, our Head Start classrooms can um, service seventeen, approximately seventeen to eighteen students per classroom. Right now, out of all of our classrooms, we have fifty-three students that are currently with I E Ps. That previously were in the self-contained classrooms. Fifty-three of them are now being serviced within Head Start classrooms. Um, fifteen of our Head Start classrooms are having those students in the classroom. Um, we have seen an increase in the number of students that are qualifying for special education services, rightfully so. Um, this, at this time right now, we have a hundred and thirteen students with I E Ps. Fifty-three of them are in Head Start classrooms, which is a significant jump from previous years for students with special education services. And one of the things I spoke about two weeks ago is that while those students are being served in the Head Start classrooms. They're receiving their minutes served on their I E P from the special education teachers that are pushing in with itinerant services. But then they're leaving the classroom. So the remainder of the day, they're still in the Head Start classroom and they still need that support. So by reducing the number of slots, we would cap each room at fifteen students. So that would be a decrease of two to three students per room. Therefore, also making it so instead of having up to five students per classroom, we would be able to have up to four students with I E Ps per classroom. If needed. Um, and again, it's just talking about that quality piece um, and being able to service those students that are, we're seeing with more challenging behaviors. So I just want to clarify out of the two hundred and fifty-five students, as I mentioned two weeks ago. Um, forty-five percent of our students within the Head Start program have to receive full day programming. So instead of partnering with P F A, we now, as you approved two weeks ago, we're going to be extending the number of full day rooms we have. So right now, we have five full day rooms. Three of those rooms we partner with a preschool for all for that extended day to offer that full day. So now, next year, we will offer eight full day classrooms um, throughout the different buildings. And out of the two hundred and fifty-five students, that would mean a hundred and fifteen students would receive full day programming. And a hundred and forty would receive the part day programming. That was a lot, I'm sorry, but I thought I should verify so, clarify so that you knew what you were voting on.
Appreciate the clarification. People might see that and think otherwise.
Yes.
Alright, any other comments?
Just for my view, the Head Start uh, uh, program does some real significant service for the district. On the board rep to the Head Start Policy Council, I appreciate their good work and their dedication and and I am very supportive of this proposal.
Thank you.
Um, if there is nothing else, uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Uh, yes, having passes, moving on to B, uh, Play Illinois L L C. Can I get a motion to approve as presented?
I move that we approve it as modified uh, with Thomas Jefferson taking place of Ridgewood Elementary.
And I'll set up that. Thank you, sir.
Uh, comments?
Do you need, I, I just was going to clarify. Um, so we have within the preschool for all program, a parent educator position. We had that person resign earlier this year. We were unable to fulfill that position um, with a qualified applicant. So in order to spend down the preschool for all money, um, we're going to be using that to improve. Purchase and install playground equipment. Um, those costs do include everything for that. Um, and we. I actually brought a picture if anybody's really interested in that, um, so that you can see what's going to go up. Um, part of the preschool for all program is that they are reviewed every three years by the state of Illinois ISBE. And one of the items that has come up on several occasions over the last few years for reviews is the gross motor outside equipment is not appropriate for the preschool. Age students. So by having these purchases and installation of this equipment, it will allow them to. Be able to have that on their review that we now have that for those centers. So. And I apologize for the error about Bridgewood as well. That should have been Jefferson. That was my error. Sorry about that. Were you able to work with the two schools to choose which playground? Um, yes, both principals have already been spoken to. We already know the spaces where they're going to go. And it's not going to interfere with the storm water project going on at Center for Math and Science.
And just to add, this is part of the Sourcewell contract, so it didn't have to be bid.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Alright. Uh, any additional comments? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, motion carries, moving on to item C, one-to-one student Chromebook purchase request. Can we get a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Probably moving seconded.
It wasn't seconded, but second.
There you go. You guys are gonna have to speed it up here, okay? No, I'm just.
Are you?
Um. Comments?
Um, every March, we meet, look at enrollments, and then we look to put in our order for April. So that we can receive those by the end of the year, so that our team can get ready to get them uh, prepped. And assembled and ready to go out for the students at the beginning of the following year. And that's going to happen every year, consistent basis.
Okay. I think my only question on this one was, is this, we got a plan a while back about. Chromebooks and technology refreshes and all that stuff. And is this part of that or is this in addition to?
It's an absolute part of that.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
I, uh, mine's not. It's about Chromebooks, not. Basically about this. Um, how many Chromebooks you think we missing like from? Being taken by students on the.
Well, I can always pull up a report and share that with you. For me, just. I would be guessing if I just said that. I mean, there's, and there's several different schools that I would want to reference in that, but we track every single one of them in a ticket. And we can pull up the graphs and show you uh, what goes missing, what goes broken, how we repair them, uh, which organization we use to repair them. So we have all that data.
When you get time, I like to see that.
Okay, absolutely.
All right, any other comments? Uh, roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Uh, yes, motion carries, moving on to item D, aperture education, can we get a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Properly move and seconded, comments?
Sure, this is regarding the Education Innovation Research Grant that we secured. It is a social emotional learning survey of students on their competencies, so it's a pre and post assessment that will include staff and students. So the grant is for five years, so we're bringing the five-year contract because this fund source allows for a five-year, multi-year contract.
And this is just the survey?
Yes.
Um, how is this, how does this differ from the Five Essential Survey?
Much different. DESA focuses only on social emotional learning competencies, only on those. Gives us a report, so then we know how to adjust and differentiate the curriculum that's being implemented in this grant to meet the needs of the students in the mental health area. And so just as a reminder, this grant, we're under the, right now, our, our staff are finishing taking a survey to say who would like to be involved in year one research. Year one is opt-in. After year one, year two and beyond are required, so every student will receive social emotional mental health class at the high school, starting in year two of this grant. Year one is optional for staff to opt in. And the staff that opt in will be randomly chosen. So it will be up to fifty percent. We anticipate it being less, but those that opt in for year one will be the ones that get to provide the feedback and get to alter the curriculum based on year one's experience.
Um, just to clarify, you said every student is going to have to?
The DESA survey will be given to all students in the district across the five-year period. Depending on opt-in for year one, then year two and beyond, yes.
In the district or at the high school?
At the high school only, I'm sorry. Yes, at the high school only.
Okay, and then as far as the curriculum, the, the kids that are in the program receive?
For year one, it will be only the kids of the teachers that opted in and were randomly selected. Because we'll have a control group and a non-control group, but year two and beyond, it will be every student.
It will be every student.
Yep, at the high school.
At the high school, gotcha.
With some flexibility there for unique circumstances, some protocols and waivers that state code allows.
So we doing this for five years, right?
This is a five-year grant, yeah, with the opportunity to re-up as it goes further.
Okay.
Yeah. And this was a grant, honestly, that we didn't expect to get. I was approached around Juneteenth as Mr. Forbes was heading to LA for a celebration of defining us and the, the nationwide release of that documentary. And he said that Connect with Kids was looking to have Chicago Public Schools or LA or New York do this, and he said there's great things happening in Rock Island Mylan. Get away from those big cities because the rest of the world needs to see that things work there. So we were handpicked by the research company Empirical Ed and Connect with Kids for the great work they were hearing that was happening in Rock Island Mylan School District.
Okay. Uh, any other comments on this one?
I just have a question. While obviously I'm all for mental health services as a licensed counselor myself, but I am wondering about how we'll manage things with families who are not interested in opting in.
Yeah, so just like any curriculum, we have a policy per state code that parents can opt out of any curriculum. So there's a process and a procedure for that. For the teachers in year one that opt in and are randomly selected, so even teachers that opt in, there will still be a randomized selection. Not everyone who opts in will be part of the research. For that, we will hold family meetings for the students in those classrooms to let them know what the project is. It will be part of registration for parents to be aware of opting in or the information around if your teacher is selected, your student will be involved in this curriculum. The big part for parent permission is the video component. In year one, our students will be a part of videotaping things that are impacting them in an appropriate manner and how they get resolved. There will nothing be put on film that a parent, student, or staff member disagrees with. But those film edits will be put into the curriculum. And our high school students will see each other and learn from each other on how they resolve social emotional issues and mental health situations at a, at a high school level.
Yeah, I think it could be beneficial for our district especially, but I do think we need to be mindful of diversity and multicultural pieces that could impact a parent or family's desire or willingness to be involved, and so making sure that we're transparent in how we're implementing these practices are going to be important.
Absolutely. The company we're working with has thirty years of experience specifically around that.
And if I could just add the, you know, and the little bit of inspiration that I had a chance to read about it and share on Paula Sands Live is that it's really about storytelling. It's about, it's about filmmaking. It's about our students using their experiences, working in student-led focus groups to create mini documentaries. So it really aligns with what our kids do nowadays, whether it's social media or, 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 or or making videos or what have you, but it just, it ties to an activity where it's student-led stories, stories of hope, stories of redemption, stories of second chances, of last chances, and this is pieces that I just shared with, you know, with, with, with CWK like Dr. Dr. Ruckerberg shared, having their years of experience and really trying to tie into those things that are of interest of students. You know, it, it, it'd be pretty, I'd be pretty shocked of students who wouldn't be interested in being a part of these type of of, of, of activities, learning how to use the cameras and being a part of a filmmaker. So it's just us again, trying to use what's interested in today's society to reach today's kids, so we're going to follow all the guidelines that make this appropriate and we'll keep in mind all the families that are diverse that we serve, but it's another opportunity that only Rock Island, here in the Quad Cities, a few schools in the nation get a chance to be a part of. And I think that's huge for us.
Okay. Final comments? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Uh, yes, motion carries, moving on to item E, springboard summer programming contract. Uh, twenty-three, can we get a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Properly move and seconded. Any comments needed on this one? This looks like we do, we do a lot of programming where springboard, obviously. This just looks like our summer contract for summer services that they're providing to us. Uh, anything out of the ordinary in this? Anyone? No? Okay. All right. Um, roll call?
Yes.
Tricky Hugh?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, uh, motion carries, moving on to item F, amended budget. Uh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, uh, amended budget. This is an informational item.
Informational item, so we're required to do this and then thirty days have to pass it, minimum of thirty days, and then we can approve the budget. So that will actually be May twenty-third, just according to our board dates, we're a few days short to hit the May ninth. So it will be May twenty-third. The budget amendment is mainly because we sold the bonds this year, November thirtieth, we sold bonds, and so we have many expenses coming through as summer projects are kicking up and going. So I do have a short presentation, so just a, I think there's like four slides, so very minimal. So next slide, please. Um, so basically, we have additional for the capital projects fund. We have additional revenue of the twenty million, three oh seven, five eighty-eight, that's your bond sale. And then seven hundred and forty dollars, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of additional interest income. Interest rates have been really, really good. We did not budget for that at the beginning of the year because they were not great. So I did increase those and then a reduction of the one percent sales tax revenue to make the June twenty-three bond interest payment. Additional expenses of fifteen million, one ninety, oh four six, that's for all the projects that you guys have been approving. Tried to estimate where we would be at June thirtieth with those, so that's why the full amount's not allocated in there because all of the projects will not be completed at the June thirtieth date. Um, next slide. Operations, um, operations fund, so additional interest income in this fund also. And then an additional four hundred and ninety-two thousand, four ninety-eight of expenses that includes the new admin center and warehouse that you guys approved the change order for, and then the paving projects throughout the district. Uh, next slide, please. Bond fund, it's really just the additional interest income and then the payment that we have to make in June, so revenue and expenses on that. And next slide. And then interest come, interest income across all funds. I added additional revenue because the interest rates have been, have been very well, so I wanted to go ahead and put that in the amendment while I was doing it, so. And next slide is just questions.
Questions?
No, it was an easy one.
Thank you for the information. I'll be back May twenty-third.
May twenty-third, and we'll have to hold a public hearing and I'll have to do the fund balance for every fund as part of that new requirement.
Okay. All right, moving on to personnel, we already knocked out Communication Director, moving on to item B, teachers completing a partial year of service. Can we get a motion to approve uh, that termination, it looks like as presented?
So moved.
Uh, properly move and seconded. Um, any comments needed on this? Um, I think this is a, this is just a routine thing for everyone, less than a year, we do this. Uh, hopefully, these people have good reviews and they'll be back with us next year. Roll call?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes. Um, moving on to item C, teachers completing part time contracts, action. Um, looks like to also terminate, can we get a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second. Um, same, same thing holds for these? Less than a year? Yeah, okay. All right, uh, roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Megan Wilson, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, yes. Uh, moving on to item D, teachers completing one year of probationary service. Um, this looks like this is also a recommendation to terminate.
I move that we approve the motion as amended at the beginning of the meeting to reflect the years of twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. The employment will terminate at the end of the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three school year. Instead of the twenty-two to twenty-four school year as listed in that.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, properly moved and seconded. Conversation needed on this one? No, roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Uh, moving on to item. On this one. The, it's on the bottom, there it is, outside bar. What would they say, but I don't know. Uh, compared a motion to approve, teachers completing uh, two years of probationary service. Um, this looks like a motion to terminate also.
So moved. Second.
Uh, properly move and seconded, any conversations needed on this item? With that, uh, roll call?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, moving on to item F. Teachers completing three years probationary service, could we negotiate? Get, uh, uh, um, I can't speak, uh, can we get a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, properly moved and seconded. Uh, any conversation needed on this matter? Uh, roll call?
Megan Wilson, yes. Megan Madely?
Yes.
Yes.
Gary wrote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right. Uh, moving on to item G, non-certified staff to be released due to non-renewal. Can we get a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, properly move and seconded, roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Um, on to item H. Uh, administrators slash teachers tenure information, so um, as I understand it, and Mr. Cobres can correct, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, these are informational items because if there's successful completion uh, a year in evaluation tenure just automatically advances.
And your happens regarding, yep.
So there are several informational items with regards to tenure. I don't think we need to go through them per se, but we'll call them all each out give you a chance to speak on them if you want, since they're informational items. Uh, item H, the administration recommends that the list of thirty-seven personnel who completed their probationary period in Rock Island Mylan School District forty-one at the close of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year be placed on tenure beginning twenty-twenty three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
Correct, so there's the list of our tenure staff who have completed their fourth year, so automatically they become tenure after this, so starting next year. And it is informational for you, tenure is a machine that moves. The only thing you do is stop it through evaluation, otherwise they earn their tenure. And this is a list of those staff members, certified staff that will earn that or have completed four years in the district.
Okay. Comments, questions? Nope, moving on to item I, administrators slash teachers contracts after three years of service. The administration recommends that the list of twenty-four personnel who have completed three years of probationary status at the close of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year be issued a contract for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Uh, the school year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four will be their fourth year of status towards tenure.
Correct. Three years have already been done. Moving on to the last one, next year.
All right.
And on that item, that is one that we added a name to, Paula Ziegler. Just for the luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, moving on to item J, administrators, teacher contracts after two years of service. The administration recommends that the list of twenty personnel who have completed um, and it'll be more, there's not one on J, is there?
Yes, there were two. I'm sorry, Sally.
So it'll be technically twenty-one personnel who have completed their two years of probationary status at the close of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year base. Uh, school year be issued a contract for the year of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four school year, the school year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four will be their third year of status towards tenure.
They're halfway there.
Woo, I am, we're getting, we're getting. J. Onto K. Um, we added two here.
Susan Lani.
Just Susan Lani, all right. Uh, so the administration recommends um, that the list of thirty-three personnel ha, who have completed one year probationary status at the close of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year be issued a contract for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Uh, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year will be their second year of status towards tenure. That is not thirty-three personnel, it'll be thirty-four with a one addition. And that excludes, concludes our business for the evening. We will be going into executive session, but there will not be any action on conclusion of executive session, so we thank you for joining us this evening, and with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Properly move and seconded, roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
Yes.
Yes.